There are many things out there in the creative field that they can pursue.
It's like you're empowering them, basically, right?
I hope so.
No, I definitely think so. You are. I mean, you're encouraging them and showing them a different route. I have to ask you, you know, as artists, our brains are always thinking and there's different things coming to mind.
Of course.
But we can also get stumped.
Yes.
Right? Because you're like, okay, I've done this. Now what do I do next?
Yeah.
Because you know, what keeps you inspired so that you want to continue to create? And when you do your last painting or the most recent one, you're not like, oh, this is it. I'm done. But no, I have this fire in my heart that still burns to make more.
Well, I think I've been able to garner a few fans. And, you know, I think I'm inspired by bringing to them the next excitement. And to violate their expectations.
Well, we look forward to you violate more of our expectations. It has been such a pleasure speaking with you today. Thank you so much for coming in.
Oh, thank you, Rasha.
This has been so much fun, just learning about your work, your inspiration and how you're part of people.
Thanks for having me.
So thank you again.
Thank you.
And thank all of you for joining us. You are watching L.A. Currents.
In L.A. this week.
I'm Rasha Goel. Up next, how City Ride is making the lives of seniors much more convenient.
Music, food, and fun. There's all that and more here in Pershing Square at a free summer concert. I'm Anita Bennett, and I'll have the story just ahead.
A fruit-themed pop-up gallery that's all the rage on La Brea. I'm Gil Reyes at World of Fruit. We'll take a bite next.
Hey, everyone. I'm Yana K. Here's what's happening on L.A. this week. It's a ride that's helping improve the quality of life for seniors, giving them an easier way to get around town. Rasha Goel has more.
I think City Ride is the best thing that could possibly happen for senior citizens.
At 91, Pat Philly goes to her part-time job and uses the City Ride service to get her to and from work. City Ride is a transportation assistance program with curb-to-curb service available for L.A. residents over the age of 65 and for disabled individuals.
You call in, you make a reservation, two days in advance for medical trips, and one day in advance for all other types of trips. You call and you give them the address, and we will pick you up in front of the curb of your home.
With City Ride, seniors can schedule doctor's appointments, visit family and friends, plan for recreational and social activities, or even go to work.
It has helped me tremendously because I cannot drive on that freeway with the traffic. And I do need to work for a living. If you're able to use City Ride, use it because it is so helpful and it's comfortable.
Basically, you need to fill out a simple application. You send us a check for $21. If your low income, it's $9 to register for the program. And we go ahead and put $84 back on that card. That subsidy amount was strictly for you to be able to use to take trips for three months.
The City Ride program also offers participants subsidies for taxi rides within the city of L.A. through the nine taxi cab companies the city operates. It's a service Pat has also used.
I have asthma, and my daughter has had to take me to the emergency hospital in the middle of the night. And they always keep you there four or five hours. So I tell her to go home, and then I take a taxi home.
And we will give you $20 worth of value so you can call a taxi all over the city of L.A. We're also going to be introducing an app so that it also allows the flexibility of people to just go on their phones to be able to make the kinds of payments that they need.
And City Riders can also ride free on the Dash Bus. City Ride is wheelchair accessible, and the maximum cost for a one-way trip is $4.
Getting around town in the San Fernando Valley also just got a lot easier as the area's very first bike share program kicks into gear to help you get to where you need to go.
Who's ready to ride a bike?
This morning, we're launching a new bike share program in North Hollywood. It's the very first bike share deployment in the San Fernando Valley. So it's big news for the valley. We want to give commuters more options. And we strategically placed these bike share stations throughout the North Hollywood area to give them the best choice for leaving the car at home and using a bicycle to make short-distance trips in the area.
What's special about these bikes, you can see behind me, is they're actually smart bikes. So many of them are electric. They make it a little easier to go a little farther, a little easier to get up that hill, to get where you're going, and not break a sweat.
Every opportunity we have to get people out of their car and onto another form of mobility is an important step forward, and I think that this is going to be a huge success. We just launched the program, and I just took a test ride on the bike just a few minutes ago. And I already saw a customer with a bike. Apparently, they were starting to rent these within hours of their first availability.
Bike share in the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles is truly an extension of public transit. So that gives people the reassurance that it's always going to be there. It's always going to be affordable. It'll be integrated with TAP, and it won't cost you any more than a bus ticket.
You probably don't pay much attention to the census, but it's a very important count that determines how much state and local funding L.A. will get based on its population. Our Anita Bennett sat down with Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez to talk about what the census means to us all.
Today, we're talking about Census 2020. Now, there's a count of the U.S. population every 10 years, and the next count will take place in the spring. There's a lot at stake, too. So joining us to discuss what's at stake for the city of L.A. is Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah. So what does a census mean for the city of L.A.?
So in the city of Los Angeles, the census data plays a critical role for not just the way we distribute resources in the city of Los Angeles, namely, for example, our basic cars for LAPD is determined by our census counts. But more importantly, each member of our community in the city of Los Angeles, that when they're counted, they are worth an estimated $1,900 in federal funds that come to our city to help support our infrastructure, our roads, our public schools. So they're really important to make sure that we get an accurate count so that we get our fair share of federal resources. In addition to that, it also clearly plays an important role in determining how many representatives we have in Congress. And so these are some very important numbers because with the population that we have in Los Angeles, making sure that everyone counts is an important part of making sure that we get the resources that our city deserves.
There is a low response rate for some of the neighborhoods in your district. What are some of those?
Pacoima, Silmar, North Hills, Mission Hills have traditionally been areas that have been undercounted. Given the pattern of behavior of this president and its administration, I understand and recognize that I think it was with their intention to try and prohibit people from participating or inhibit people from participating is my belief. I think to deny us the resources that otherwise we would be deserving of. And so I think we've seen a lot of actions that have been very punitive in nature to withhold resources from the city of Los Angeles. And so we're asking everyone to participate in this process so that we cannot be denied the resources that our citizens in our community are deserving of.
What are some key dates we should be aware of?
So March 12th is when some of the initial mailings will begin to notify everyone that census is open. But March 12th is when that online portal will be available. And we have a finite window for people to participate on that online portal, and that's going to extend through July 31st. So it's just a, it's a very abbreviated timeline, so we want to make sure. It's one of those things that, you know, it's kind of like doing your homework when you're in high school. The sooner you get it done, the sooner you go out and have fun. It's just an easier thing for you to just handle, take care of, the minute that it's available so that we can get everyone counted in the city of Los Angeles. So we want to encourage everybody to participate. For more information, we have a website, which is census.lacity.org. And we want to encourage anyone, if you have questions, and clearly, you can always contact your local council representatives. But we are all very concerned in making sure that our communities are counted.
And once again, that is census.lacity.org.
Community groups and other local organizations were out in full force recently in Council District 9 to give those experiencing homelessness a helping hand.
So you're standing in the middle of Homeless Connect Day. We've been doing it, I think, close to 10 years now. And this is an opportunity to bring all the services that people need in one place. You know, people experiencing homelessness usually have a lot of barriers. And one of the largest ones, besides not knowing where you're going to sleep every night, is trying to navigate through all these different systems. And so we have legal aid here to provide support to people. Many of them have nuisance tickets for living on the street or other legal matters that they can't deal with and can't afford to deal with. Literally, if they're street homeless and they need a place to go, they can move from here and directly into shelter. If they need medical support, they can get it on site. If they need a driver's license or ID, the DMV is here to do that. So connect is the operative word in today's event.
They have like therapy, just different things to help your family. I'm grateful because before I got here, I don't know where I would have been with my child.
Our goal is for them to connect to one or more needed services and leave here one step closer to being housed and off the street, one step closer to being able to secure additional income and become employed, one step closer, maybe, with dealing with their addiction. So our goal is for them to leave here one step closer to whatever they're trying to achieve.
Actually, it's just not unhoused people. We provide a shower to anybody that wants a shower. And everybody likes to be clean. So it's a joy to see them come out really happy.
Homelessness is all of our problems. It's a humanitarian issue. Nobody should have to sleep outside. So I just encourage folks to get involved in whatever way they can to make it better.
As you've probably heard by now, Hollyhock House in Hollywood is now a UNESCO World Heritage Site. That's like the Oscars for cultural and historic value, and people are visiting in droves. Anna Marcos takes a tour and joins the curator in a game of I Spy.
First order of the day when you enter the Hollyhock House is put on your booties. And you can see why. There's actually lots of people in this house, sometimes as many as 40 visitors, and visitorship has actually doubled since it went on the UNESCO World Heritage List.
We know that we have history. We know we have great architecture. We know we have outstanding universal value. The world hasn't always thought so. And so now, we don't have to justify it anymore. We've got it, and we're recognized for it. And UNESCO's done it.
Hollyhock House, the crown jewel of Barnstall Park, was built by famed architect Frank Lloyd Wright as a hilltop home for oil heiress Eileen Barnstall in 1921. It becomes the first L.A. landmark listed as a UNESCO World Heritage Site, joining an exclusive club that includes the Statue of Liberty and Yosemite National Park.
You had this iconic architect, Frank Lloyd Wright, move into collaboration with a single woman, oil heiress, who is also an artist and a political radical. And the two of them began a collaboration to, in a sense, create an oasis in the middle of Los Angeles.
We call it Hollyhock House because Hollyhock House was Eileen Barnstall's favorite flower. And she asked Frank Lloyd Wright if he couldn't possibly use it in the design.
And this is a hollyhock?
And this is Frank Lloyd Wright's abstract version of the hollyhock.
The stone architecture, it looks kind of like Mayan or Aztec. It's very cool.
Did you know that that's actually an abstract design of the hollyhock flower?
I did not know that. That's awesome.
The fun game is how many hollyhocks can you find?
How many?
Well, a lot. But it's real easy to find the one in the carpet.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And they are everywhere you look.
You get to add to your list of I Spy hollyhocks.
Is this a hollyhock?
It's an abstract, yes. There are elements of the hollyhock design in these windows as terms of architecture.
The real hollyhock and the abstract hollyhock.
Yep, the real flowers are planted everywhere. But in spite of the name, there's more to this house than just hollyhocks.
This is made of cast concrete blocks. It's an abstract design. Frank Lloyd Wright looked to nature for all his inspiration. You have water. You have fire. You have earth in the concrete, and you have light.
I really love architecture, so I wanted to kind of figure out like what was so special about it and like why there was so much hype around it.
I'm a really big fan of Frank Lloyd Wright. I just really like his style because it's so simple and natural and really evokes the elements of the earth and nature.
I want you to take a look at the back of this chair.
It's a hollyhock.
It is.
And so a Hollywood landmark has now been upgraded to one of the world's most important cultural and historic sites.
For more information and to schedule a tour, visit culture.la.org and click on Hollyhock House UNESCO Designation. L.A.'s Department of Cultural Affairs manages the site. Councilmember Gil Sadio helps support a new Latino history book in L.A.'s libraries, a boost for MetroLink ridership, and local high school students get free Wi-Fi, thanks in part to L.A. Council President Herb Wesson. All this in City View. L.A. City Councilmember Gil Sadio and the L.A. Public Library are working together to distribute a new book called Power Shift: How Latinos in California Transformed Politics in America to Library Branches Throughout the City. The book details the legacy and accomplishments of 10 East L.A. Latino political leaders. MetroLink has hit a major milestone, hitting nearly 12 million boardings last year. The new record is an increase of 247,000 boardings from the prior year and eclipses the record set in 2008 and 2009 fiscal year. L.A. City Council President Herb Wesson has announced the launch of a citywide program to give free Wi-Fi hotspots to low-income high school students so they can do schoolwork. Council President Wesson is working with One Million Project Foundation and Los Angeles Unified School District on this project. Want to post something different on Instagram? Well, a new pop-up gallery is the first in the world dedicated to exotic fruit. And you can even sample some of these healthy foods while you're there. Gil Reyes shows us.
Get your camera ready. In the world of photo-friendly pop-up galleries, a new one called World of Fruit brings something new to the table.
As far as I know, it's the first and only fruit-themed immersive experience in the world. And we just opened a couple months ago. We're directly across from the legendary Pink's Hot Dogs. So we're a great location here, a lot of summertime fun here, get some great photos, taste some yummy treats, get a nice popsicle. It's just a good time here.
Founder Andrew Zo takes us on a tour.
So Andrew, this room is all banana slices, but they aren't your typical banana slices.
No, they're not. So, you know, our whole thing is food you've never seen or tasted before. You know, we don't want to do a traditional yellow banana. A lot of people have called these cow bananas, a bunch of different names. We just want to make things unique.
Here's a nice group photo taken from this room. Moving on.
A little bit more of a tranquil experience in this room compared to the others.
Right, definitely. So you can see, this is our Holy Vines Room. We have fog going. We have, you know, birds chirping with tropical rainfall sounds. We see a beam of light coming down, and it kind of illuminates this garden of Eden almost with these enlarged berries.
World of Fruit also hosts private parties as well as film shoots, celebrate with friends in the Infinity Grape Room or in the Pineapple Disco Derby. This space even has watermelon disco balls to get you in the party mood. Now on to the next room.
Andrew, this is called the Watermelon Room?
Right. This is one of our fan favorites, actually, just because there's so many photo ops. You know, two swings, you have a seesaw, and you get a wonderful waterfruit popsicle that you can only get here.
Thanks, Jordy. How many flavors do we have?
We actually have watermelon here, and then the bottom is actually a lemonade flavor. And everything's natural, gluten-free. It's only 60 calories as well. Everything in this room you can actually play with, so all the swings work as well. It really brings up the inner child in people. So even, we've had some people, you know, like 70, 75 years old, come onto the seesaw and just have a great time. This, to me, is the most exciting part of our experience. You know, a lot of Instagram museums out there, you can get the photos, but none of them have this. Every guest that comes in here gets a sample of each of these fruits. So we'll start here with the jackfruit. This is one of our fan favorites. It's a very sweet fruit, very tart. We have guava here, passion fruit, yellow dragon fruit. We have baby pineapples here, rambutan, as well as star fruit. You're not going to find these in your Vons. You're not going to find these at Ralph's in your local grocery stores.
Come get a taste and snap some photos at World of Fruit at 716 North La Brea. For ticket info, log on to worldoffruit.co.
A portion of the proceeds benefits the L.A. Food Bank. The gallery runs through the end of October. It's an app that helps kids discover and explore the world around them. The goal is to get more kids outside playing and learning.
We are really happy to have all of you guys here today at L.A. State Historic Park for our official launch of Agents of Discovery. Agents of Discovery is like Pokemon Go but for education.
I need two objects with masks. I mean, yes, it's, yeah, masks.
It's all about getting out and exploring. It's, you know, linking location to learning.
Read this challenge, and this is one of our missions.
Agents of Discovery allows students to learn more about parks. I get to learn something, and I love nature, so it's even better.
The city of L.A. was one of the very first customers of Agents of Discovery, and they now have nine parks that are participating across the city. And there is about, in total, about 300 locations in the country.
So I have learned that there used to be a train station here.
And then how did they clean the area afterwards? By planting corn to suck the toxins out of the ground. Just walking through here and doing the app, I think it expands essentially our knowledge of the area.
Learning something new, it can open up doors for you to have better perspectives of other places and other things and other people.
This is what the world needs. We don't need more entertainment. We need more families out happy together exploring.
Who doesn't love elephants? They were the hot topic recently during World Elephant Day at the L.A. Zoo. It was all part of an effort to increase awareness of the challenges that Asian elephants face and protect them from extinction.
This weekend, the L.A. Zoo is celebrating World Elephant Day with a lot of activities focused on Asian elephants. August is Asian Elephant Appreciation Month, and we're trying to shine a light on Asian elephants because they're highly endangered. Some of the, some of the challenges facing Asian elephants are illegal ivory trade, habitat destruction, and human-elephant conflict. As people take up more and more space, elephants have less space to live in, and that's causing a lot of challenges for them.
I think it's very informational, very educational, and eye-opening because you see how they're trying to mimic their natural environment here, and we're killing it out there, so it kind of sucks.
We have a campaign called Tons of Love. We're trying to get 40,000 social media posts that are tagged with the hashtag #tonsOfLove to let people know there are only 40,000 left.
We, as a people, we should do something to save, you know, not only elephants, all the endangered animals.
Come down and tour our barns where you can learn more about our elephants and how we take care of them, what they eat, and participate in some fun activities that we've got for the kids. There's all kinds of fun stuff to do.
Each summer, the Department of Recreation and Parks offers a summer concert series in Pershing Square. Anita Bennett reports the events are a big hit with people who just happen to be downtown. The sounds of summer and a brick springfield filled Pershing Square at a free summer concert.
This is fun. You know, our kind of music, the food, the day, just getting out of the office. Perfect.
As the crowd took in the music, South Bay cover band Radio Rebels belted out a string of 1980s hits.
This is our third year playing Pershing Square, so we were really excited to be asked back. The energy is so fun. I mean, we get an eclectic crowd here. People that work downtown L.A., people just maybe visiting here in the summer, tourists.
Those tourists and others in the crowd settled in for an afternoon of fun.
We're from Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
So how'd you hear about this?
We were just walking by, and we heard the music. And I pulled my daughter in because I love this music. This is music from my good old days.
It is lunchtime, so for anyone looking to grab something to eat or drink, they got that covered, too, at the Pershing Square Farmer's Market. I'm having a tropical juicy juice. That's good.
The Summer Concert Series is presented by the Department of Recreation and Parks. And judging by the reactions, well, today's performance hit just the right notes. The Pershing Square lunchtime concerts are held each Wednesday afternoon throughout the month of August. Enjoy Sunday Market, that's 100% vegan. Come out for a Latina Fest that's all about empowerment. And book lovers explore the writings of great authors, poets, and artists at a village book fair. All this and things to do. Vegan Sunday NoHo is the South Valley's free 100% vegan market, featuring local food, apparel, and lifestyle vendors. At Vegan Sunday, you'll find an army of vendors serving up tacos, drinks, burgers, and more alongside cosmetics, candles, and then some. Join your NoHo neighbors for Vegan Sunday, weekly from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at 5300 Bachman Avenue. For more details, visit vegansundayevents.com. The Lamont Park Village Book Fair returns for its 13th edition. Book lovers, families, and fans of all ages are invited to join in on this unrivaled literary event. Come celebrate the writings of great authors, poets, and artists during this day-long festival. The 13th Annual Lamont Park Village Book Fair drops on Saturday, August 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Get more details at lamontparkbookfair.com. Experience an empowerment celebration. Latina Fest 2019 is an outdoor festival which brings together thousands of women eager to engage and network. You can shop, enjoy some wellness pampering, or sip wine at the Cocktail Garden. Then listen as inspirational talk Latina speakers share how to find the most powerful you. Latina Fest 2019: Mind, Body, and Soul makes its way to La Plaza de Cultura y Artes on Sunday, August 25th, beginning at noon. For more information, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. this week.
Good morning, good morning. Would everybody please take a seat? Today is Friday, August 23rd. Want to welcome you to City Hall. This Los Angeles City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Bloomingville Bonin, Buscaino Cidio, Harris Dawson, Weezer Coretts, Cricorin, Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Smith-Wesson. Eleven members present. Anna Coram, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Rue moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves. Coretts seconds, next.
Items one through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee report for item 10 has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
All right, let us prepare. Mr. Weezer.
Can we hold number two on the desk, please?
Let's hold number two, and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, the ordinance for item one will be held over one week unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, thank you. And if we do get to 12, and we should today, please remind me.
And on the continuation agenda, item 11 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
All right, let's prepare to vote on that item as well.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there is a request to hold that item.
Okay, then we will hold that. That brings us where?
That takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Okay, Ms. Martinez, to you. Why don't we start off with a presentation? Thank you, Madam President and, and members. This is one of those days where we get to say thank you to someone who has played a very import, played a very important part in our lives. And then we also have the opportunity to wish them well in the future. Can we get a round of applause for our own Carmen Hawkins? Give her a round of applause. And, and right before I get into this, are you just gonna sit there and leave me up here? Are we, is that what we're gonna do here? Before we start, um, Madam President, uh, I think Mr. Spindler has earned a warning, okay? This is a very important presentation to me personally, because this is a very, very important person to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Um, Spindler, this is your last warning.
Carmen went to, I, I, I believe, and I don't think I'm gonna need my, my notes, so we'll see. UC Santa Cruz?
Yes.
Where she, isn't at the campus with the big trees?
And the banana slayer.
And the, okay. And that's where she got her bachelor. She then went on to Georgetown, and she became a lawyer. She did some private practice stuff, but her life with the city of Los Angeles really started in 1988, when she came to work for the city attorney's office. And in that office, she has had a variety of assignments, civil liability section or division. She also worked in criminal. She's got trial, uh, court experience where she dealt with DUIs, sexual assault, you name it. She's, she, she, she's done that. Most of us know her because of the work that she's done with our neighborhood councils. She's been doing that for quite a while. And just to throw in a plug for our neighborhood councils, I mean, to me, that's like the purest form of government where neighbors are taking care of neighbors, trying to make their communities better communities so that our city becomes a better city. So she's been working with 99 of them. So even though I love them, I know that's a challenge. Not only has she been a phenomenal lawyer and friend to us, it always amazes me that people who have a full work history find time to do so many other things. She was the president of the Black City Attorneys Association, the president of LawPAC, which is a, a group of women. It's a, it's an African-American political action committee. She has received commendations and awards from city government, county government, state government, and the federal government. And I won't go into all of them, but one of them is a little special to me. She received three years ago, the Martin Luther King Jr. Award from Smyrna Church, which just happens to be on the corner of the street where I live. She has been a phenomenal mother. She has two adult sons, I believe, Justin and, and Marcus, one of which is one heck of a basketball player, and she is also a grandmama. a basketball player, and she is also a grandmama. This -- yeah, yeah. Wait a minute. Now, if you want to give her an applause for being a grandmother once, I am a grandfather four times. So I mean, blow the roof off. This is a bittersweet moment for us. It is bitter, because we will not be able to see you as much as we would like. But it is sweet when you think about the challenges in the next chapter of her life, and the phenomenal things that she is going to be able to do. So I want to say that personally, I will miss you, not just because, see, I like the way you dress. And you're smart. I like people that dress to the nines, and you do that. But more importantly, I'm gonna miss your wise counsel, your always being available when I needed you or my office needed you. And I'm sure that many members around this horseshoe will miss you for those very same reasons. So let's give Carmen one more round of applause, members. And if I remember correctly, you've had the pleasure to serve with Jimmy, huh? Rocky, Carmen. And now it's my pleasure to present to all that are here, an individual that sat around this horseshoe himself, and then he took a trip up north and stayed there and sat in a desk for a little while, and then he came back here and he represents us. He represents us well. Our own City Attorney, Mike Fuer. Give him a round of applause.
Thank you so much, Herb. I want to take a little liberty here, and because it says so much, Carmen, about you. I would like the current and former members of the City Attorney's Office who have come here today to celebrate with you to please stand up. And you have family and friends from this whole section is the Carmen Hawkins cheering section today. Madam President, Carmen knows how to pack a room. There is no question about that. And this is not the first room she's packed. As President Wesson indicated, she is a recipient of many awards for that 31 years of outstanding service to the city of Los Angeles as a member of our office and her public work. One award that Mr. Wesson didn't mention is of think of special significance. I had the honor of joining Carmen at a meeting of the Langston Bar Association, because Carmen was inducted. You know, we have athletes who get honored here, and musicians and actors who are honored here for their awards. Carmen is a Hall of Famer. In November, when she was inducted into the Hall of Fame for the Langston Bar, it was quite an event, and a real celebration, Carmen, not merely of your achievements as a lawyer, and not merely of your achievements as an active leader in bar associations in the community. I saw a celebration of who you are as a person. And it is that level of respect and affection that you inspire from your colleagues and from those who you serve, that leads to so much recognition that you've received, but most importantly, to the day-to-day recognition you get. I've been kidding Carmen for a while, because it has been the festival of Carmen for almost a year now, culminating in her soon-to-be retirement. Mr. President, you said that it was a bittersweet day. It's been kind of melancholy for a few months now, because we've known this day is coming. And I want to not talk about a list of the things you've done in our office. I want to do something a little different as we conclude here, at least as I conclude. Carmen, one thing that you do that hasn't been spoken about very much is that by your example, you personify what achievement and eloquence and commitment to public service and passion reflect. And by that example, I hope that on TV, there are kids who are wondering who they can become, looking at you and saying, hey, no, I could become Carmen Hawkins. You know, I remember being in this chamber. I occasionally conduct conversations with leading figures, and I did one with our DA, Jackie Lacy. I remember Ms. Lacy saying that when she was going to college at UC Irvine, she was not expecting to be a lawyer. She went there to be a teacher. But she had a presentation from a judge, an African-American woman, and that, for the first time, led her to think, you know, I could do that. And you are somebody who I hope kids throughout our city will look to and say that their potential has yet to be unlocked, in the same way you have succeeded in striving and working and pushing and being tenacious and leading and being a symbol of excellence. So Carmen Hawkins, all these folks are here because they love you very much. All of us in our office love you very much. And just like some of the alums who are sitting here, you're gonna come back. I know you are. And when you do, there'll be lots of smiles on the faces of everybody you interact with. Carmen, thank you for your service. All of us are deeply grateful.
Thank you.
Well said, well said. Let's give Carmen another round of applause. Thirty-one years of service. Thirty-one years of service to try to make us look good. We do appreciate it.
Mr. Wesson, I have members on the queue. Would you like me to?
Let's go.
Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you, Council President Wesson and City Attorney Fuer for bringing this great presentation today. I have to say, Carmen, I was caught a little bit by surprise that this day was actually here, because, Corrin, the first day I got here, I ran up to Carmen, and I was like, I want to work on this, and I want to work on that. And the first thing she said was, I'm retiring. I'm getting out of here. And so I'd see you again and again and again, and you became a fixture. And so I'm a little bit sad that this day is actually here now. But so much has been said, but the thing I wanted to add is, in all the years as a community activist, before being on the council, there were always people in the community that knew how the inside worked. And so oftentimes, we'd be in a meeting, and we'd be riled up about something, and we'd be ready to take action, and we'd have people ready to go, and someone would say, call Carmen. And then Carmen would say, well, if you do that, you're gonna get this. If you do this other thing, you're gonna get that. And really could help us direct our actions in a way where we produce results, which is so important, because if people get involved over time, as you well know, if they come to neighborhood councils, they come to community groups, and nothing changes, they get frustrated and they walk away from it. But when they have folks who can point the way and shine the light on the right path, it becomes fruitful. People achieve change, improve their neighborhoods, and feel better about who they are and how they participate in their city and their community. And you facilitated that for so many people around the community. And so we thank you for that, and we honor you for that. And one last thing to our City Attorney. I do not think Carmen will be back to City Hall East, because there's so many things waiting for her to do in the neighborhood that people have already signed her up for. So she's gonna be fully booked.
Mr. Price, followed by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. This is just a great way to celebrate a great person. Carmen, your reputation certainly extends beyond the walls of legaldom in here in City Hall, but really in the community. I mean, you're known as a community resource. And so I'm just happy to celebrate your transition to an even more active life. You know, you're a positive role model for those who are interested in the law, those who are interested in the intersection of law and civic engagement, and who are understandably appreciative of the professional excellence that you bring to the table as well. And so we're just gonna, we're not gonna miss you, because we know we're gonna be seeing you around. But just thank you for the contribution you've made. Thank you for the contribution your family has made, letting you be you and an outstanding member of the city family. Thank you and congratulations.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you so much, Madam President. So Carmen, I only have the benefit of knowing you professionally for many, many years in your role in the City Attorney's Office. And I think it's just so wonderful when a member of the city family, much less someone who is retiring, has set such a high standard for all of us, not just your colleagues in your office, but the entire city family. And that speaks so well. You're the type of individual that I learn from every time there's an interaction with you. And there's a beauty in that, because it makes us all better at our work. It helps us understand issues more deeply. It helps us understand how to approach challenging situations more intelligently. And I think that that's a huge part of your legacy in the City Attorney's Office, and especially with your work with the neighborhood councils. And we can all benefit from that. And so that's what I'm gonna remember about your presence here at Los Angeles City Hall over the last 31 years, but certainly the last several years, that I've had the great honor of knowing you and working with you. So congratulations, and we'll see you back in a different capacity, because I know you'll continue making an enormous difference as a private citizen. And we're gonna benefit from that as well. I wish you well. Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Wesson.
Okay, so at this time, I would like to -- and we have a visitor with us today, Al Vida, representing the postmaster. Come on up. She was hiding from you in the back. So on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I would like to present you with this resolution that, if you choose to, can go on your wall. It is very good-looking, and it kind of gives a snapshot of the good work that you've done for the people of Los Angeles, and in particular, the City Attorney's Office and this building. So let's give Carmen one more round of applause. Michael, you're in here. And Al Vida, you have something from the postmaster?
Yes.
Come on up. Come on, no, no, speak into the mic.
Good afternoon. Well, it's still morning. Carmen, we're buddies, and you've always been there for the postal service. On the behalf of the United States Post Office, we pulled a Thurgood Marshall, first-day issue, January 7th, 2008, from Washington, DC. We hope you enjoy it.
Ladies and gentlemen, Carmen Hawkins.
Thank you very much. I tried to write remarks. I tried to go over my 31 years here in the City Attorney's Office. And actually, I go much further with the city, because I got my start with Council Member Gil Lindsay from the Great Nine during the Tom Bradley era, when we had the Bicentennial Commission. So that was really my first introduction to city service. I have to start this way. I want to thank President Herb Wesson. He's my buddy. You know, we have, we -- I have been blessed, because there are a number of people who now sit here that we started together a long time ago as foot soldiers in our respective communities. And I'm very proud of where they all have risen to this level, from City Council to at this point. I want to recognize my city family who is here behind me. My client, which is the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, with, I guess now former manager, Gracie Lou, who's moving over to another part of the city family. At this time, I would like everyone who is either currently with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment or the City Clerk's Office, both current and alumni, if you would please stand, because I want to say thank you for having helped train me to be who I am in that area. So if you would all please stand up. I want you to know, this is the best of the best back here, okay? And then those who weren't able to make it because they had to stand. I, you know what, my kids are gonna kill me. My sons, Justin and Marcus, were both born while I worked in this office. They were raised in this office and have gone on. So you, the city has always been a part of my village in helping them to get them where they are now. Because they are young men with current jobs, I told them to please do not take any time off, keep working. Love you. Keep working. And then my five-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter just started kindergarten, so we couldn't take her out of school. Everybody will be able to, you know, watch this later on. Thank goodness for live streaming, City Council member. We can watch, you know, watch tonight. Although I'm leaving, I am leaving the city, the neighborhood councils in good hands. My current staff, where are you? Elise Root will be taking over. Come on, Elise, stand up. She'll be taking over as the supervising attorney. And then we have Steve Houghton and Ruth Kwan. You are all being left in fantastic hands. Then I have, okay, a new addition to the city family is my own cousin, Sharice. Monday, Sharice, you need to stand up, because this is actually out of my entire family that's here. This is what we call the DNA family. Her mother and my mother were sisters, and unfortunately, both of our mothers are watching down on us from up above. I have -- oh, my God! Oh, you guys come on here. Come on, uh-uh. Give it to somebody else. Okay, I'm about to be in tears. This is my baby boy, Marcus. He works for HBO in New York. So somewhere, he has gotten on a plane and come from New York to be here with me today. Yeah, my other son, Justin, he's a video specialist for University of Pacific Men's Basketball Team. And as you know, this is kind of early season for them. So we're gonna wish their season well, and again, I'll get to talk to him later, but oh. He doesn't like the limelight. My other extended, what happens is, in the African-American community, we have what we call extended family, our village. Not only do we have our DNA family, we have the family that raised us in our neighborhoods, in our community, in our professional life. And I'm honored today to have many representatives of my extended family here in the House. And I would like to have them stand and be acknowledged, because these are the individuals whose shoulders I have stand on. They are part of the wind beneath my wings that help me be me and do what I do. So if I can have, come on, Curtis, everybody stand up. And so I probably And so I probably have forgotten something, probably will remember it later, but I want you to know that... And I want to speak to the young people who may watch this to let you know, I'm a girl who grew up on Grape Avenue in Compton, California. I went to George Washington Elementary, Willbrook Middle School. I was supposed to go to Centennial, but because I lived on Grape Avenue, you know, the crypts kind of came out when it was time for me to go to high school. You know, I could deal with the Pyrrhuz, but I couldn't deal with the crypts and the blood. So I went, got on that bus, two buses in the morning, and I went down to Long Beach. And I am a proud Long Beach Polly Jack Rabbit. Oh, I got to give props. I was born at Queen of Angels Hospital. So, you know, I am a true Angelino. I want any young person to know that adversity only makes you stronger. Adversity is the stepping stones to get you to the next level. It does not define who you are. And wherever you are, know that we, the collective village, there is a village who is out there to help you. So all you got to do is reach out and touch, look out, and we will be there for you, okay? The city has some of the greatest resources. We got the best wrecking park system in the world, you know, that... So it's not about money. It's not about status. It's about our humanity. And that is what we, who live and work in the city of Los Angeles, represent. And that is hopefully the legacy that I'm leaving behind for whoever takes up the mantle after me. Will always keep that in their heart and their mind in what they do. Thank you so much.
Great, Carmen. Well done. Very well done. Very well done.
Mr. Caurets, are you ready for your presentation? Mr. Caurets? Mr. Caurets, are you ready for your presentation? Good morning, Mr. Caurets. Just want to... Do you want to take a second just to make sure our council chambers gets clear before you get started? Mr. Caurets, whenever you're ready. Good morning, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, it's pretty unusual that we have two such notable retirements here in one council meeting. But it's my honor today to recognize Jody Oximer's retirement after 38 and a half years of service to the city of Los Angeles. I've personally known Jody since our children went to the City Hall South Daycare Center. But way back when it was called that, it's now the Joy Picas Child Care Center. My wife, Gail, and Jody have been friends since Gail worked for Joel Wax way back when. Jody was hired by the CAO in March of 1981 during her junior year at Occidental College. Bob Chase, then the CAO executive officer, became her mentor and lifelong friend. She worked for the CAO for 36 years before moving to the Personnel Department in 2016 as an AGM. At the Personnel Department, she has overseen employee benefits, workers' compensation, equal employment opportunity, and safety divisions. Some of her notable accomplishments over the years have been being the first intern in the CAO's office to receive a budget assignment, writing the report that created the Housing Department, being the first woman to receive a police department budget assignment, changing the way the city budgeted sworn police salaries, supporting the Oversight Committee for several propositions, including Proposition Q, which was public safety facilities, Prop F, which was fire facilities, Prop K, park facilities, and working on zoo facility construction. Also, she shepherded the negotiations of the alternative dispute resolution programs with the Police Protective League and the Coalition of City Unions to a very successful conclusion and participated in the successful implementation of both. She oversaw the launch of the city's wellness program. And she played a key role in the risk reduction cabinet's collaborative and intensive efforts to assess and update the city's harassment and discrimination policies, procedures, training, and technology, which has included overseeing the launch of My Voice LA. During Jody's 38 and a half years with the city, she served five mayors, starting with Tom Bradley, and countless city council members. Jody could always be counted on to find creative and innovative solutions to any kind of budgetary, administrative, or management challenges, always relying on the city charter and the administrative code to guide her. Jody's husband, Dr. Mike Jorgensen, who has a special place in my heart as my cardiologist, and their children, Julianne and Robert, have been an active and integral part of her city career, supporting her through long hours and challenging assignments while the city family watched her children growing up. Jody will be remembered as someone who is never too busy to share her time, knowledge, or resources with anyone who asks for your help. We're so grateful for your service to the city over the past decades and wish you a very happy retirement, filled with quality time with your children and your husband, hopefully memorable trips to national parks, and checking books off your reading list. So congratulations on your retirement. And now we'd like to invite General Manager Wendy Macy from the Personnel Department to say a few words.
Thank you. It's a... As with the previous presentation, it's a bittersweet day for us in the Personnel Department. I've personally only known Jody for four and a half of the 38 and a half years that she's been with the city, but it's... She's been really a remarkable addition to our group in Personnel. She and Jenny Yao were actually... I met them both when they were analysts at the CAO's office who worked with our department. And now they both work at Personnel. So sorry, sorry, Rich. But she has been terrific. I mean, she has taken on these very complex matters with a steep learning curve, and she's taken them on with just hitting them in full stride. She's really been excellent at developing and maintaining wonderful relationships with our labor partners. The ADR agreements are a big success, the Wellness Program, the JAL NBC, it's all a big success, and it's thanks to Jody and her work with our labor partners. She's very, very generous with her time. She's often mentoring our young staff. She meets one-on-one with a lot of staff. She helps people with mock interviews. That's the sort of person that Jody is and has become in our department. And on one final note, we're a little relieved it's not Pet Adoption Day today because if there was a puppy, or the five puppies, Jody would have adopted them. And even if there was a kitty, even though she's allergic to cats, she would have adopted them as well. She's just a very kind-hearted and generous person, and we're going to miss you very, very much.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to ask our CEO, CAO, Rich Llewellyn, to say a few words.
Thank you, councilmember and councilmembers. I actually know Jody and her family through church. She was one of the choir... Kids Choir Moms, which is a totally thankless task. It's like adopting every puppy that comes by. And you see behind me many people from the CAO's office who viewed her as the Kids Choir Mom in the CAO's office, one of those sort of leaders who was super smart and super helpful, also a mentor, and sort of a role model, which is why so many people are here to wish her well and to say thank you. And so, Jody, we wish you well and we say thank you.
Thank you.
And Jody, could you share a few parting words with us?
Councilmembers, Councilmember Caurets, thank you so much for this honor. It's amazing how quickly 38 and a half years go by. Thank you to the CAO for taking an intern and giving her so many opportunities until before she knows it. She's a chief administrative analyst. And thank you to the Personnel Department and Wendy Macy for giving me the opportunity to be part of her remarkable and amazing team. I'd like to acknowledge and thank all of the members of my city family and my personal family who are here today. My brother, Chris, who works for DWP, my husband, Mike, who, as you've heard, is a cardiologist. And some of you may have encountered at Kaiser because he's always been ready, willing, and able to help with any questions or guidance that people might need. I see some nodding heads. It's really been my privilege to serve your body, to serve the mayor's office, to serve the offices where I've worked, to serve the city and the citizens of Los Angeles for these many years. And I'm especially grateful for all of the opportunities I've been given and for the opportunity to celebrate with my personal family and my work family. Thank you so much.
Mr. Caurets? Mr. Caurets? Mr. Caurets? Mr. Caurets, I got a few members on the queue. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. It's a real pleasure today to recognize Jody. You know, in 1981, when she came as an intern, my boss, Councilman Hal Berenson, was chairing the first international earthquake conference, which the city of LA hosted. And the CAO sent Jody to our office, an intern, on that project. We had 30 countries of the world come here, 300 delegates. It was a tremendous success. And Jody, that was, I think, one of your first projects, if not your first project. And I just enjoyed working with you all these years at this side of the building because you... Whenever you came to us, you had, first of all, that smile you've got right now, that great smile that you've got. You were a joy to work with, but more importantly, no matter what you were doing, we knew when you came to us, what you told us was factual, honest, and true. And we could take it to the bank. And that's a quality around here that's really valuable, that we could count on somebody like you to always give us the truth and do it with a smile and go on and do your work in such a great way. And I'm very proud to see what you've become. I got stuck in this building and never went anywhere in my career, but you just continued to grow in the civil service system and be a star. So it's been a pleasure working with you all these years. I tried retirement once and it didn't work out real good. I had to go back to work. I hope it works for you. Thank you.
Mr. Kokorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. Smith, give it a few more hours. You know, a lot of times when we talk about the work that our city family performs, we think in terms of projects and important things that have been accomplished. And certainly, there's countless... There's a countless list of those things for you, Jody, of things that you've accomplished. But I think it's also important to think about what happens as a result of that. And you have been instrumental in, as many of the others who are standing here with you have been. But your leadership and your diligence and the work that you've done has been instrumental, really, in saving this city from the precipice of bankruptcy. We went through the most challenging time that we have in this history city and in the history of this city, in any of our lives, anyway. And we did that in large measure because of the work that you've done, the work that you've done with Labor, the work that you've done in so many other areas of helping us with our budgetary and other processes. That means that we can deliver services that matter to the people of this city right now that we might not have been able to deliver had it not been for your work. Your work with the payment system, for example, we're all grateful to you for that, that maybe we will continue to be able to get paychecks, which was very much endowed otherwise without some of the work. And then particularly with targeted local hire. This is a legacy project, I think. And when we look back years from now and see the people that have come through the targeted local hire program because of, again, a lot of the leadership and hard work that you demonstrated, we're going to see hundreds, maybe thousands, of lives and families that have been permanently transformed. People who were living on the street, who because of your effort, got an opportunity to have a career in this city, serving the public in civil service, whose children and grandchildren will have different lives than they would have had it not been for your work. And so as you retire, I hope you realize that although you may not be putting in the time here anymore, your legacy will go on for, literally for generations in this city because of the work that you've performed. So on behalf of all of us and the people that we represent, thank you. We're very, very grateful for what you've done.
Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to rise and thank you, Jody, for all your incredible work in revamping our city sexual harassment policies. I think that it wasn't for... If it wasn't for you wrangling all of our departments and agencies to work together to protect our very own city workforce, I don't think any of this work would have been possible. And I think it's all due to your efforts. I also want to thank you on behalf of my staff. I know we made several last-minute requests, and you were always so willing to take our input and work with our office. And for that, thank you very much. I know you've worked on a lot of different city policies, but for me, this particular policy was personal. And I want to let you know that you have made an incredible impact when it comes to our city family. And for that, thank you very much. Your work has not gone unnoticed, and it will live on. Thank you very much and congratulations.
Ms. Caurets, back to you.
Well, now it's my great honor to present a certificate from the City Council to Jody on the occasion of her retirement and to recognize all her incredible 38 and a half years of work for the city of Los Angeles.
Madam Clerk, why don't we move to reconsideration if you want to give whatever explanation is necessary?
And that would be reconsideration of item number one for the ordinance?
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thirteen ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now let's move to item two. On the previous vote, forthwith. Now let's vote on item two. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And it's my understanding on item 11, Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Street Lighting to come up for a moment, please. So, thank you, Mr. President, for accommodating me on this, on Wednesday, and thank you for joining us today. Appreciate the report. I just really wanted to get kind of a status update and an expectation of completion on the record because yesterday, by coincidence, yesterday marks, marked the seventh anniversary of the death of Irma Zamora and Stacy Schreiber in my district, when a car that was driving recklessly sheared off a fire hydrant and a streetlight pole. And the pool that was formed caused an electrocution of those two women who died because of the high-voltage contact with that water. And since, in the seven years that have happened since that crash, it's been a very high priority of mine to get rid of all of the high-voltage streetlights throughout this city. It seems as though we've made significant progress, and yet I want to know when we're going to get to the finish line. I want to know when there will not be a single high-voltage streetlight in the city that will be endangering people. And it's especially important now, as you deal with on a daily basis, because when we have copper theft and other things that happen, people's lives are at risk from, who are trying to steal things as well. They're literally risking their lives for a couple of dollars' worth of copper or something, which is insanity, but that's happening throughout our city. So when do you expect, no, let me rephrase it. When will this city be finished with that project?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Vince Nguyen, representing the Bureau of Street Lighting. And as of this point, we have approximately 7,500 high-voltage streetlights remaining throughout the city, and it's our goal to convert another 5,000 high-voltage streetlights within this fiscal year.
Okay.
And we'll have 2,500 units remaining for the next fiscal year.
Okay. So, under any circumstances, then, we should be finished with this entire project by the end of fiscal year 2021?
It's our goal to do that. Are we going to try to get the funding for the remaining 2,500 this November, when we start the budget process?
Okay, well, you have my strong vote in support of that budget appropriation. Let's do this and get this done with all deliberate speed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, then. Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, I'd like to start on some general public comment at this point. Thomas Malcolm, Mia Wang, Mike Greenspan, Laura Natoli, please come forward when I call your name.
And, Mr. President, as the speakers make their way forward, there are requests to send items one, four, 10, and 11 forthwith today.
Let's do that, okay, without objection. All right, yes.
Good morning. I'm Lauren Natoli from AIDS Healthcare Foundation. According to the last point-in-time homeless count, there are almost 10,000 people living in their cars throughout the city of LA, and it is projected to keep growing. It is unjust to force these people into shrinking corners of the city and stall action on promises made to alleviate their conditions. Putting the spotlight on penalizing vehicle dwelling casts a shadow on the most important problem, the failing of our housing systems that put them there in the first place. We cannot further harm our own community members by criminalizing the seeking of safety and security in their own vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Previn, Mr. Smith, Corey, come forward. Again, Greenspan, Mr. Joe Jimenez, come forward. Corey, come on. Mr. Smith, come on. Let's go.
Okay, so, I just want to touch on what I was speaking on yesterday, or on Wednesday, in regards to the, the projects with the high, the new technology. Because basically, my dad lives in an area where they have been testing this technology before implementing it, and there has been necrosis to the tree behind his house, which is a graying of the, of the plant. So, I just, I'm not against this technology. I haven't ever been against it, but I just, we need some protections. And even, I mean, ultimately, I just want some sort of meter on each of these streetlights or on each of these transmitters so that there can be alternative regulation.
Okay, Mr. Previn, Mr. Spindler, yes, sir.
Thanks. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and I guess this is a general public comment. So I'd just like to call out Mr. O'Farrell because I think that, you know, people on the internet are saying that trying to make it harder for people who are lying down near, it's just more of a, it's almost like an apartheid situation where you have zones in town, and that's, that's just not helping. We're going to be sued again. He's also up there with the NRA, again, sticking stuff up about, you know, that's going to provoke lawsuits. I just think we have to try to focus on doing what we're doing. So, thanks for the lighting districts, Mr. Kukorian. Looked like we're rolling back $2 million in the appropriation for those things and going for $19 million debt service, which sounds interesting. Now, as for the open space in Studio City, again, we are diligently concerned about how it's being overtaken by the city and the Bureau of Engineering. We had a big fuss with your RAP Commission the other day, who should not be applying for grant money for putting a giant structure on an open space in Studio City at Beeman Park, okay? And Harvard-Westlake is also in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, Mr. Spindler, again, Mr. Greenspan, Thomas Malcolm, Mia Wang, Mr. Herman, Antonio Ramirez, please line up. Start, Mr. Spindler's time.
So, no go. I welcome back Honorable Fable, come back to council go. He look well rested. But today, the big problem today, Nigga bring in trouble to chamber today. Nigga go back with old Nigga to do other thing with terrible paperwork. The Honorable Greg Smith, please go back to the back chamber and stop terrible act from happening. Bad luck happen when you do dumb shit thing. I'd like to thank, on behalf of Chinese government, the continued payoff to Mr. Huisah, and thank him for staying here even though he go down. Thank you, Honorable Nigga, for letting me talk. Have such good weekend. Thank you, Nigga.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Okay, Ms. Ramirez, Mr. Herman.
Could you please pass these sergeant of arms to all the council members and city attorney, please? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the three biggest money-making, oppressive, controlling, sinful, evil, satanic religious institutions are all the Christian churches, the Catholic churches, the Satan's elite Zionist Jewish temples. They are all hypocrites, murderers, sodomizers, pedophiles, and homicidal maniacs because they have killed in the name of God. We have had no public safety at the La Placita in the Music Center Grand Park. Homeless women, law-abiding homeless women who are not engaged in crime are daily and nightly subjected to assaults, vandalism threats, theft, 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 mob liches, gang stalkings, and harassments. I have told LAPD officers Larry, Joseph, and Sergeant Perry, among many others, that we need public safety, protection against all these wicked motherfuckers. We are subjected daily from the Skid Row niggers, the White Trash, and the goddamn...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time is, your time is expired. Your time is expired. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Herman?
As far as the First Amendment, United's first, Baghdazarian number 0950529 for the record of 2011 U.S. APP Lex Is 14684 regarding Nigga Obama, Nigga Garcia. The nigga has done nothing good. The nigga done anything right? He will have a 50 caliber to his head. Is that a threat? Baghdazarian made a threat on the internet? According to the United States versus Baghdazarian, it's not a threat. Raising my fucking voice is not a threat. Calling assholes for what they are, jackass morons, stupid politicians who fuck up our homelessness, fuck you. 42 U.S.C. 1983. I wish I could, if I could, put a 50...
Thank you. 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 Is there anyone that we didn't call? All right, that concludes general public comment. What is, come forward and give me your name. Yes, ma'am, your name?
Hi, my name is Siri Correjed. So I initially came here because I wanted to talk about the crisis that's happening in the Amazon right now because it affects all of us. But I can't believe that I'm actually sitting here and you guys are talking about gang violence when Ryan Twiman was shot 34 times by the Sheriff's Department. Y'all, the LAPD just shot a homeless man the first of this month. I can't believe that I'm sitting here, listening to justification of a sweep when you guys aren't being proactive. David Ryu, you were giving yourself so many accolades yesterday for helping 54 homeless seniors when there's 20,000 people on the street, and you are allowing developing, developments to continue happening. You're allowing rent to continue skyrocketing. How is rent affordable? What are you going to do? You're not allowing people...
Thank you. That is your time. So that concludes, please come on. Identify yourself. Your name?
Hi, my name is Rosette Garcia. I'm a homeowner in Highland Park, and I have actually already been in contact with my council member, who is Gil Sadio, via email. And my concern today is very local and perhaps not on the level of some of my previous speakers, but we have a, I'm here on, on behalf of 12 homeowners on Banks Court Drive in Highland Park. We have an active, open sewer leak in our neighborhood. There is raw sewage leaking out onto the street, down onto Avenue 50. We have been working with the city council since fall of last year, asking for the city to please bring our neighborhood up to the standards of current sewage code that we do not have, that our neighbors have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes general public comment. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, what is before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Announcements. Members, I think it was in 2011, one of our colleagues retired from this council. And he wasn't here on his last day. So there were so many members that wanted to say kind things about him because he is very deserving. We found ourselves on this council in a very unique situation several months ago, and we had an opportunity to appoint a caretaker, which has been the norm for this body for decades. But we decided, and I spoke to each and every one of you, to appoint an actual voting member to this body. Some people were concerned a little bit that, that this district that we were going to appoint this person to might be upset. But when they found out that this council was considering asking a favor of Greg Smith to come back and sit around this horseshoe, until we were able to get an elected member, I would hope, Mr. Smith, that it would send the message to you that you were not loved in that district. You were beloved, beloved in that district. People from, Ms. Ramirez, please, sit down and be quiet, all right? You know, this is our time. You spoke, this is our time. To have a community come together and say yes without a formal election, to have individuals that are Republicans and Democrats say this is the way to, to move forward, has to be a great honor to you. And I just want to say that I enjoyed serving with you prior to 2011. And these past several months, it has really been an honor. You have been such an asset to this house, a stabilizing force, a voice of reason, knowledge, and experience. And I'm sure, and others will probably chime in, but I can say that it has been a pleasure that I personally have learned a lot. We thank you. In fact, maybe more importantly, we thank your wife for allowing you to do this. This council has been a better place because you've been here. And, members, in the future, I think that the people of this city gave us the authority to appoint voting members, and we should not shy away from that because we have Greg Smith to point to as an example. Now technically, today is your last day, and I just think that it's appropriate that we would let you know, and from one friend to another, from, from Wesson to Smith, that you will be missed, and it's been an honor to serve with you twice. And the last thing, somewhere, somebody's going to write a crazy little history book, right? And there's going to be a footnote that's going to indicate that there was one crazy guy that left and came back and was able to leave again and, and got out unscathed. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give Greg Smith a round of applause for being a great public servant to the city of Los Angeles. Now, maybe, Mr. Smith, would you share us?
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. It was nice that we finally got to do our Smith-Wesson motions. We talked about it for a long time. Those got done this time. You know, I, I think of the great words of Martin Luther King, who said, "Thank God, I'm free at last." I feel kind of like that. For the second time, one, one constituent said, "I think you're trying to sneak in a third time incrementally." time incrementally." And that may be the case, I don't know. The fact of the matter is, I came to this chamber 40 years ago this year, 1979, on July 1st. And I came to this chamber, I looked around and said, "Wow, this place is really amazing. What a special place." And for 24 years, I worked here as a deputy and a chief deputy, and one day I got elected and I sat in this chair and I looked up again and said, "Wow, this is a very special place." And January 15th, when you brought me back, I sat down again and looked around and said, "Wow, this is really a very special place." It has been an honor to work with all of you. Some of you are my former colleagues, Jose and the two Pauls, and of course, Mr. Wesson, who sat next to me for a while. We did a lot of good things and took care of a lot of business. Some of it was always not always fun, but we did what we had to do, and it was a pleasure to do that. And to be asked to be coming back again, as you said, it's gonna be a footnote in history, first of all, it was the first appointment to the council in over 52 years. The last man appointed to this council was none other than John Ferraro, which this room is named after, and who, as a deputy to Hal Berenson, wrote my acceptance request letter to USC when I went back and got my master's degree. So we go back a long ways and have a long connection to John and this chamber in that respect. And so it was very interesting there. And the best we can tell, no one had ever been brought back as a former elected official back to the council in the history of the city. And so what you did was really historic, and I'm proud to be a part of that. And as you said, I hope future councils will look at what you did on January 15th as the exemplar of the way to do it. It is the right way to represent people, is the right way for democracy to work. And so congratulations to all of you for having the foresight to do that, not for me, but as my wife said, for the community. It was the right thing to do. And I want to thank a lot of people, too, that I've worked with. First of all, these characters over here, we come in and, yeah, and we come in every morning and just laugh uncontrollably for no reason. And it could be temporary insanity, or it could be just, sometimes this place gets kinda crazy. But it was a great opportunity to work with them, certainly CA's office and CLA, and Sharon So. I was kind of her unofficial campaign manager to be chief legislative analyst. Our friendship goes way back and far beyond this chamber. People like Avak over there, who I've seen in here for 40 years. The staff over in the CLA's office are awesome. It's a pleasure to be with you. And finally, there's a few of them here today. We gave a lot of them the day off and a lot of working out in the district, but the 12th District staff who we said our goodbye to yesterday. When I came in and inherited Mitch's staff, I didn't know what I had. Most of them had never worked for me, but what I got was an incredible group of focused, laser-pointed people who were really wanting to serve the people of the district, and they didn't falter for one minute. They just changed gears and kept going and did an outstanding job. So to them, I shall be forever indebted. And to you, for the opportunity to serve again, even though there were a lot of 14-1 votes, that was kind of my reputation anyway. And then I'd look to Mr. Sadio and he'd argue against something, and I go, "Yes," all right. And I go to vote no, and he votes yes. And I go, "What the heck, Gil? What are you doing? I don't get it." Our signals weren't very good. But to tell you the truth, being here is quite often like being in the ninth inning at Dodger Stadium. You never know quite towards the cap, but it's usually gonna be pretty good and exciting. So thank you for the opportunity. God bless you all. My wife and I are taking off on Tuesday on a two-and-a-half-month tour across America, and so you won't see me for quite a long time. And then I'm going back to serve the city once again as a reserve police officer where I'm gonna go arrest bad guys and get them off the streets. So thank you. It's been an honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'd like to recognize Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Greg, I just want to say for the record, I have not had the pleasure of working with you, but I want to say that you are a true gentleman, sir, a true gentleman. It's been a pleasure working with you for the last eight months. And I want to publicly recognize your wonderful wife. She deserves a round of applause for allowing you to come back and do this. I want to wish you the best on your next endeavors, and thank you for everything that you continue to do for our residents of this wonderful, wonderful city, but especially for residents in the Valley. Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't expecting to have to roast Greg, but I do want to just say a couple of things. When I joined this council nine years ago, Greg, we disagreed on a lot of things, and yet we quickly became friends because it was obvious to me how much you care about the future of this city, how much you care about the people that you represent, and how much you care about this institution as well. And so while there were a lot of 14-1 votes, both in the old days and more recently, it was always very clear that we could agree without being at all disagreeable. And in that respect, you're kind of an example, I think, of exactly the kind of public servant that we need many more of, especially right now, especially in this environment of toxicity and division in our city, in our country. You really have been the kind of leader that demonstrates what a true public servant should be. The fact that you had an opportunity to run for a final term and chose not to, to pursue other pursuits, is an example of, you know, what you are about. Because it's not about just staying in office, it's not about just going and, you know, extending your political career. It's about serving the people, and you demonstrated that again and again. And you especially demonstrated that by your willingness to accept the council president's entreaties to take this job and to continue to represent the people of the 12th District during the time when they were not represented. And I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you personally for what you've contributed to this city, to this council. I have to say how much you contributed also to helping to save this city from the precipice when we were in the throes of the Great Recession, and you served on EERC and the Budget Committee and worked so diligently to try to bring us back from that edge. But again and again, in helping to develop policies around here, you've been a voice of reason and moderation, and even when we didn't agree, you always made our work product here in this council a better one. And I think the people of Los Angeles, all of the people of Los Angeles in all 15 districts, are grateful to you for that.
Mr. Sadio. Gilbert?
My brother. Now, first of all, applause to your wife for taking you back, right? The applause wasn't letting him leave, it was taking him back. So you are living your best life, and I admire you and really appreciate you. I, you know, I wrote that speech, and I don't know how it got into Mr. Krikorian's notes, but he just said everything that I would say. I will add, however, that I'm fascinated also, though, by this little Bosch character that you play, and that you're, I know that you're gonna go back as a reserve, and that's really a fascinating part, and I really admire that as well. I appreciate your work. And so you are the consummate public servant, and you believe in servant leadership like I do, and you believe in policy before politics. And that's what 14-1 is. 14-1 is an act of faith. 14-1 is a belief in your values and a belief in your perspective, and a belief in the route that you have committed to, to get that perspective executed in the public sphere. That's what 14-1 is. It's a real act of faith, and I admire you for that and all your 1 votes. I know that it's not typical. I know it drives your staff crazy. I know it makes people ask, "What is he doing?" Because I'm familiar with that in my office. But it is really the consummate person of governance, and as Mr. Krikorian said, in this climate, in this time, it is a great example of real leadership and real commitment to American values and to the American ideal of this incredible project that we call democracy. And so your presence, thank you, Mr. President. Your presence here was a lesson for all of us. Your experience obviously is sage, and your commitment is obviously well-known. I would note for my colleagues who have not seen your service center in the Valley, that it's incredible, that it really reflects how much you are loved by your constituents and how you believe in both today but also in the future. And so for that, I can't thank you enough.
Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. President. Greg, I just want to observe, this time you seem much happier to me. I'm not sure if it was because you only had to do it for a few months, or if because you got another shot at public service unexpectedly. I'm not sure there are many people that would have gotten this appointment. I think it's a sign of how well-respected you are by your colleagues and those who weren't your colleagues yet but have watched your career with tremendous respect. I enjoyed the fact that you had an occasional 14-1 vote, and in fact, I consider you my role model because I've done a few of those as well, and I think you helped me give the courage to do that. So I wish you the best of retirements. This time, I hope you're able to actually retire. I never expected that Jody Yoxheimer would retire before you, but that only happened because you got a second shot at it. You've had an incredible career. I have tremendous respect for you, and I wish you all the best in your retirement.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman, it is difficult to follow a lot of what has been said because it's been said well and said eloquently, but I'm glad it's being said because as we were walking down the stairs the other day, I was asking you about your last day, and you reminded me that you snuck out of here early the last time. So you probably didn't get the opportunity for the love and the accolades from the people around the horseshoe. So I'm glad we have an opportunity to do it today. I first met you, I guess, in the mid to late 90s when you were a big staffer and I was a little staffer in the building, and I remember then and over the years that you were sort of a role model for how to approach doing this job of serving the people of Los Angeles with humility and with dignity and with seriousness of purpose. And, you know, Mr. Krikorian in particular talked about your civility and your ability to disagree with someone and not be disagreeable. And I wish that were not a throwback to an earlier era. I hope it's that your return here is a reminder of what we can be, because frankly, we're a hell of a lot better than most other chambers of government in this country, and how that can work. Everybody's talking about the 14-1 stuff, and I guess that's not, the 14-1 votes weren't surprising. And when Mr. Wesson suggested you being reappointed, I think a lot of us said, "Well, with Greg, we know what we expect, and we know what his record is like, we know what his temperament is like, so, you know, we'll expect some 14-1 votes on stuff." But people weren't expecting surprises. But there was one thing that happened in your brief return tenure that was both surprising and absolutely delightful to me, words I never thought I would hear. We were in closed session one day, and we were debating an issue, and I spoke, and a few minutes later, you got up and said words, again, I'd never expected to hear. I agree with Mr. Bonin 100%. So I was glad that you've gotten more progressive in your retirement, and if that's the arc you're on, we'd love to have you back in a few years.
Okay. And you know what? Really, we joke about the 14-1, Greg. It was not a whole lot of 14-1s. I mean, Greg worked really hard to try to move to where he could support it, so we're blowing that a tad out of proportion. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to hearken back to, I think, probably early in your first term when you were on the city council before, and in my community of Glassell Park, I remember hearing about, you were chairing Public Works Committee, and I remember hearing about an issue in Glassell Park on a steep hillside street that had completely broken down and was causing a serious sort of drainage and erosion problem because, for that reason. And what was reported back to me, because by then I'd started with my predecessor and I was in a council office, and they said, "We went to committee and we brought our concern to the Public Works Committee, and Greg Smith was chairing, and when we brought up our concern, he asked for details, exact location, and within a couple of weeks, a city truck was out there repairing and fixing the Public Works issue that they brought to you." And I thought to myself, "Now that is a good public servant." That has stayed with me for all this time and is still with me to this day because when I think back about what a good public servant is, I think about how a good public servant, no matter if they have the title of the elected or they are on the staff of an elected official, they deliver for constituents who have legitimate issues, where resources exist that can make, that can improve that issue. That's exactly what you delivered for Glassell Park all those years ago, and that's exactly what you did for the 12th District in two full terms, and then this latest stint. And I'm just so glad that I had the opportunity to actually serve with you. When I had heard that there was talk of appointing you in this position, I was delighted, not just because I felt it was important that the 12th District have representation that was proven, that was responsive, that, you know, had that history of delivering services, but that I would get to work with you for a little bit. And so I've always looked up to you. And then just lastly, I remember when I was a brand-new council member, you made a special trip to come to my office, and you gave me the copy of a book that was called "If These City Hall Walls Could Talk." I still have that book. I love it. I think it was self-published, and it's terrific because I think you love this building, you love this institution, you love this city, and your call to service in the role of council member was as pure and authentic and righteous as it gets. You didn't exhibit ambition for a different office, you didn't hedge your bets on decisions based on what you might run for in the future or what you might or might not do. And that's exactly how we should always look at our work, and I think that's part of your legacy and one that I will hold near and dear. And I just am so grateful to have the opportunity to spend these past several months with you. And I think the 12th District is extremely fortunate enough to have you in this role as well. You're gonna be another excellent council member emeritus from the 12th District, your second time around. So thank you so much, and Godspeed to you and your family.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo all the words from all my colleagues, and as Councilmember O'Farrell stated, you know, before I got elected, I knew of you, but we never met, we never talked. And I remember when I got elected, you too came up to me and gave me that book, which is a great read. I mean, I read it in one sitting, cover to cover. It's a very small book, "If These Walls Could Talk." And you also offered up your guidance, your support, and you were, I mean, talking to you for the first time, I felt like we were friends for a long time, and I really appreciated that. And, you know, your second tenure here at city council, hopefully you could have version two in your two-month trip. You could have a book two of "These Halls Could Talk," because I'm sure you got a lot more new materials. But it was such a pleasure to serve with you, to be your seatmate. And I felt like you just integrated in from the beginning. It was seamless, and as such, you're integrating yourself seamlessly out again. I mean, that is a true testament of a public servant. And I really thank you for everything you've done. It's been such a pleasure to call you my colleague, and I could say I served with you. And, you know, actually, you still have one more term left, right? And you never know what happens in politics, right? So, and if I'm fortunate enough to be here a little longer, who knows? Who knows what the cards will hold in the future? Maybe you'll come back yet again and make history as a... But, well, maybe not that, but thank you so much for your service. Thank you for being such a good friend, and we look forward to seeing you again and again in these halls. Thank you.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
You know, sometimes when you don't hit the mic fast enough, everybody else speaks before you and says everything. And I want to echo the words of all of my colleagues, and it's just, it's been a pleasure working with you. I do think you have a great postscript if you want to... If you want to get more sales for the book, you've got to get all sorts of great stories. But in particular, you know, having a colleague from the West Valley makes a real difference, because we're often, you know, we're often the second thought around here. We always, it's part of, you know, the chip on the shoulder that we have, but it's a legitimate one, because we're so far away. And it's been, it's been nice having a fellow comrade as far as, as far as West Valley things go, and I've really appreciated that. And appreciated your chairmanship on ITGS. I got to serve on the committee with you, and you always handled everything professionally and appropriately, and you've been a wonderful colleague. So I'm grateful, as with the rest of my colleagues here, appreciate the good work that you've done. I can see by your wife's reactions, you're not coming back for another term, but you'll always be here as a LA Angelino, as a West Valley guy, helping make our community better in whatever capacities that you're doing it, and I certainly appreciate that. And thank you for your service and your friendship.
Mr. Weezer.
Well, first of all, thank you so much, Greg, for your service. And when I got here in '05, '06, around that time, I really enjoyed serving on Budget and Finance with you. I actually look forward to your comments in that committee, because I knew you would bring us back to moderation. And, you know, this was at the time when we were going through some very difficult times, as Mr. Krikorian said, and you certainly were a loud voice, although you're a minority voice, you're a loud voice, that I think really helped us get through those difficult times. So thank you so much. And also, as you go back to your retirement, the type of person you are, and we've commended you on your public service, but your last time you went on retirement, through your work as a reserve, you actually solved a case that had been lingering for a very long time, that actually occurred in my neighborhood. And that goes to show the commitment, passion, and care for others that you have. You brought some justice to a family who's been looking for some answers for a very long time. That means a lot, and that's the type of person you are, just someone who cares, and you do something about it, and then it shows. Thank you so much for your service, and thank you for being a friend, too.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Greg, I certainly enjoyed serving with you. We didn't spend a lot of time together. In fact, I got to know you best from your book. And for me, it wasn't bedtime reading, but it was certainly good bathroom reading. I got to learn a little about you and others around here. But just want to say, man, I just enjoyed chatting with you. You're always a straight shooter. You always have a perspective, and one, a perspective that always supports the people. And you and your lovely bride have certainly have worked together over the years to provide services, to provide the kind of commitment and the kind of understanding about how to solve problems, how to engage people, and how to get things done. So we're just happy to serve with you. Again, thank you for your service. And you've proven, incidentally proven, Mr. President, that it is possible to go through that revolving door and do it and come out unscathed, you know, come out with some credibility, come out with some energy and some enthusiasm. So we look forward to your passing through that revolving door again, and who knows? Who knows where you may end up again? But wherever you are, we're going to love you. Congratulations.
Mr. Krikorian.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the comments I made, I thought that it was important that we set an appropriate mood for Greg's retirement. Would you like to join us, Mr. Corret?
I love, Greg, what you have done. You made Mr. Krikorian tell a joke, that in itself. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, city family, let us rise and say thank you to our friend and colleague, Greg Smith. Thank you, Greg. We love you. Let's do a photo in the middle. Okay, why don't we all rise? Members, why don't we all rise? For adjourning motions, so I'm going to recognize Mr. Blumenfield.
Today, I'm going to ask that we adjourn in the memory of our deputy city attorney, Stefan Fabel's mother, Catherine Fabel. Catherine passed away on August 5, 2019, after a courageous eight-year battle with pancreatic cancer. She was born on June 8, 1938, grew up in New Orleans, Louisiana, graduated from the Isidore Newman School and Louisiana State University. Catherine later went on to work at Tulane University Medical School, where she met her husband, Dr. Thomas J. Fabel. They went on to have a happy marriage for 57 years. She was a committed volunteer on behalf of art and music, especially opera. For over 30 years, she supported the Metropolitan National Council Auditions Program and its young singers. She truly loved life and treasured her family and friends above all else. She's survived by her husband, Dr. Thomas Fabel, their one and only child, Stefan Edward Fabel, and his partner, F. Thompson Simpson. Stefan truly had, you had an amazing mother, and we're really all sorry for your loss. We hope that she's found peace after her long battle with pancreatic cancer. We know that she'll live on in the hearts of the Stefan family. We welcome you back after this very difficult time, and we wish that your mother will rest in peace. Thank you.
Well, well said, Bob and Stref. We are back, and we are glad to have you back. And I'd like to request that maybe Ms. Martinez and I be afforded the opportunity to sign on as well. In our service, she lost her dad, I lost my mom, and so we know exactly what you're going through. So let me now, anyway, welcome back. Mr. Price, did you have a journey motion?
Yes, yes, Mr. President. And members, I ask that we adjourn today in the memory of a respected community and religious leader in our community, Edward Victor Hill II. Edward Hill II was born April 3, 1967, in Los Angeles, to Dr. Edward Victor Hill and Jane Edna Cruthers Hill, who preceded him in death. Edward accepted Christ as his savior and was baptized in July 1971. He was ordained a gospel preacher in December 1996 at the Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church by his father. In March 1997, he became an ordained minister in the International Pentecostal Holiness Church by Bishop B. E. Underwood. In November 1997, Edward was called to pastor the Calvary Temple Pentecostal Holiness Church, where he served as senior pastor for 15 years. While at Calvary Temple, Pastor Hill organized 30 different ministries with a diverse multicultural membership comprised of over 30 different nationalities. In December 2012, Pastor Hill resigned from the pastorate at Calvary Temple Pentecostal Holiness Church. On October 2004, Pastor Hill was elected as pastor of the Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church in Los Angeles, succeeding his father, who shepherded the congregation for 42 years. The first order of business for the newly-elected pastor was to renew and restore Mount Zion by remembering the legacy while building a dynasty. Prior to his tenure, during his tenure as pastor, 1,600 souls were saved, 500 people were added to the congregation, and 1,500 souls restored to the kingdom. Pastor Hill's love of the San Fernando Valley and in obedience to the Holy Spirit led him to organize the North Hollywood-based Spirit of Zion Fellowship Church in January 2013. Pastor Hill was proud of the newest ministry he organized upon leaving Calvary. While memberships are few in numbers, in spirit, few in numbers, the Spirit of Zion Fellowship, their love for each other is evidenced from the inception. July 13, 1991, Pastor Hill married his sweetheart, his childhood sweetheart, Sia Atchison. They recently celebrated their 28th wedding anniversary. Together, they've worked in the ministry side by side, showing their love for each other and the Lord's calling on both their lives. On Monday, August 12, 2019, Pastor Edward Victor Hill II was called home to be with the Lord. He lives to cherish his memory, his beloved wife and son, sister and brother-in-law, nephews, nieces, and friends, as well as several godchildren, a host of aunts and uncles, two congregations, and friends too numerous to name. He will be greatly missed. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Price. And we should probably, I should sign that along with Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And members, especially on Mr. Smith's last day, perhaps it's appropriate that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Jim Hardy, who recently passed away. He was the oldest-living Trojan football player and the oldest-living Los Angeles Ram. And he passed away at the age of 94. Mr. Hardy was a quarterback and defensive back for the Trojan Football Team, also a third baseman for the baseball team. He led the Trojans to victories in the Rose Bowl in 1944 and 1945, and was the most valuable player in the 1945 Rose Bowl. He went on, after his playing career, to attend 85 consecutive Rose Bowl games as a fan. This was Mr. Football in Southern California. After his time at USC, he went on to serve the United States Navy during World War II, and like so many of our heroic veterans of that great generation, came back and built a successful career here, both playing football for the Rams, as well as the Chicago, then-Chicago Cardinals and Detroit Lions of the NFL. He was a Pro Bowler in 1950. And then after his retirement from football, went on to have a very successful business career here in Los Angeles from 1973, and then, I'm sorry, after his business career, from 1973 to 1986, he served as general manager of the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum. And in fact, he was general manager of the Coliseum at the time of the 1984 Olympics, when the Coliseum was so prominent on the global stage as the center of the 1984 Olympics. So Jim Hardy left a lasting legacy on our city, on the Olympic movement, on USC, on the Rams, and will very much be missed. He's survived by his wife Henrietta, whom he met while at USC, as well as their four children and a grandson. Jim Hardy will be missed. May he rest in peace.
Well said. Any more adjourning motions? Seeing none, members, this meeting is adjourned. And again, thank you so very much, Mr. Smith.